All right, good evening, everybody. Call the City Council meeting to order today's date. May sixth, twenty twenty-five, May sixth, twenty twenty-five, time, five thirty-one hours. Next, we will have the prayer by Elder Calvin Gilchrist from Beautiful Valley Free Wheel Baptist. Mr. Gilchrist, the podium is yours. Begin when you're ready for the prayer.
Thank you for being here.
Let us pray. Most gracious and holy Father, we come before you this afternoon to give you thanks, to give you praise, to give you glory for all the things that you've done for us. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here on today. And we thank you, Lord, for each and every member of this organization. We ask, Lord, you a special blessing for the mayor of this city, Lord, and all of his cabinet. We thank you, Lord, for just blessing us to be a part of this city. We ask, Lord, that you bless the Robert Swenson family, Lord, as they have lost a loved one in their family. We ask, Lord, you just continue to comfort their hearts. We praise you, Lord, and we glorify you for being the God who you are. And, Lord, even in the midst of this meeting, we ask that you would show up, Lord, and allow your chakana glory to overflow in here, Lord. We ask, Lord, you bless us in a mighty way, Lord. Bless our city, Lord, and we ask that you would speak peace in this city. We love you, Lord, and we praise you for all that you've done, and we're looking for great things to happen in this city. We thank you and we praise you. We ask these and other blessings in Jesus' precious name. We do pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, United States of America. We pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember C four.
Present.
Councilmembers, or Mayor Pro Tim Hardy.
Present.
Councilmember Suggs is not here, or Councilmember Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have a call. All president are accounted for. Are there any citizen comments?
Yes, sir.
All right, under citizen comment, citizens must sign them before the start of the meeting if they wish to address City Council. Citizens should state their name, address before beginning their comments, and may be able to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Citizens seeking assistance or asking questions will be contacted by a member of the governing body or appropriate city staff. Madam Clerk.
Jeanette Blue.
Yes, ma'am. That podium, and you may begin at the podium. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Blue.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmember, I am Jeanette Blue, and I reside at six fifteen Marcela Drive. I have been here in this fair city for five years now, moving from Maryland. And on my block, I'm really a little bit disappointed about all the abandoned houses that's there. I have written to you guys about this one in particular, this one house, I think it's five oh one Marcela Drive, and the doors are always open, the windows are always open, and I just think, I feel it's not safe. It's not a safe house. Because that's why I have written to you guys. I even wrote to the governor, and he told me to give it back to the mayor. So I'm standing here today saying, after all of this time, this house is still here, with the windows open, the doors open. I have called the City of Kinston and complained about this numerous times. I don't feel safe on that block with that house being like that. So that's why I'm here to address the council and see what can really be done. I mean, if they just board up the house, if it's abandoned, if you board it up, then maybe I will feel a little bit better about it. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Blue. We'll address the matter, and thank you so very much for bringing it to attention.
Ma'am, Ms. Blue, what's your physical street address again? Mm-hmm.
All right. Madam Clerk, will there be any others?
Matthew Whittle.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whittle.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Matthew Whittle. I'm the executive director for Habitat for Humanity of Goldsboro, Wayne. Of course, we serve Wayne and Lenora Counties now have since twenty twenty-two. Just wanted to come in for just a moment today and provide just a very brief update as to how some things are going with Habitat, and also invite you to participate in a special volunteer opportunity that we have going on right now. So since twenty twenty-two, we've done, we've built three homes here in Kinston. One of them will be closing on tomorrow on Northview Drive, so we're excited about that. We also are currently under construction with a home in La Grange, and then we'll be back later this summer with another home here in Kinston on Perry Park Drive. So we're very excited about these opportunities, very excited about the support that we have received from Kinston and from Lenora County as we've been building our relationships here, building our foundation, building our service area here in Lenora County. But what I wanted to invite you to do is join us for a special volunteer opportunity. We've invited the county commissioners, we've invited the La Grange Town Council, of course, want to extend this invitation to you all as well. And we're calling it our team up with Habitat small volunteer opportunity. Basically, what it is, is when you look at Habitat's mission statement, it says that Habitat exists to share God's love by working with our neighbors to build homes, community, and hope through affordable homeownership. And so we're inviting you all to come and join us, and we're inviting all of Lenora County to join us to really focus on the community part while we're building the home. So while we're building this home, this home in La Grange over the next several months, we have designed some special small group volunteer opportunities. And the goal with that is to invite folks, hopefully folks that may not know each other well, but invite folks to come join us to spend a few hours on our job site, swinging those nails, swinging those hammers together, putting those nails in together, sweating a little bit beside each other, and getting to know each other, having a conversation. And then we're going to break bread, we're going to have a little time of fellowship, and we want to continue that conversation. We want to get to know you, we want to build our relationship from Habitat to you. We also want folks in the community to use our job site and use this opportunity, build relationships with each other. We want you all to talk about things like, what's your favorite place to eat in Lenora County, and what do you order when you go there? What holiday did you enjoy, and what did grandma cook when it was time for the family to gather on Sunday afternoons? Those are those sort of common things everybody can relate to, and really begin to build that relationship. For us, we take seriously that whole mission statement. We build homes, we're really good at that. We build community. We want to really begin to do that here in Lenora County, and through that, we're going to build hope with our families, but also with the community at large. So come join us. You have our brochure with our information, our impact report. You have a little flyer about the event, also as well as one of my cards. Be happy to come and share another update in the future. As well as, if anybody has any questions, you can reach me. I'm happy to meet you at any point. Yes, ma'am.
Is the date actually May sixteenth?
No, ma'am. So that flyer was our original flyer, so that has our kickoff. The date's run May first, which we started last week, through June nineteenth. All right. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. I do appreciate it.
And please feel free, if you have any questions, to reach out anytime.
Yes, sir. Madam Clerk, will be any others?
No, sir.
All right. Under adoption of the agenda, for councilmen wish to revise the agenda, the motion to add or delete an item will be entertained before adoption of the agenda. Will there be any others? Hear none, see none, entertaining motion to approve of...
Motion.
Some move is a second.
Second.
Some move by Mayor Pro Tim Hardy, seconded by Councilwoman Solomon. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hear none, see none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Under minutes. Consider approval of minutes City Council meeting held on April first, twenty twenty-five, and April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, would you like to entertain?
No, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, entertaining motion. Some move. Is there a second?
Second.
Some move by Councilwoman Solomon, seconded by Councilwoman C four. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hear none, see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, under presentation and recognition, there are proclamations one, two, and three. Teachers Appreciation Week, National Police Week, and Nurses Week. All these proclamations will be on the website, and you can go and view them at any time. They are so proclaimed. So just to go up there to the website and take a look, and they'll be there. All right, and that's where we are on proclamations. All right, next, under public hearing and action, consider approval of rezoning requests for property from IB Industrial Business and B General Business to O and I Office and Institutional. Direct to blood.
Good evening, council. Thank you, mayor. This request is for rezoning. Hold on, let me get my things together. Sorry, I didn't put these in order. Rezoned from Brian Pike. The rezoning is located at one thousand three West New Bern. It is from industrial business and general business to office and institutional. Staff received a request from Brian Pike to rezone these two lots owned by Tabernacle Free Wheel Baptist Church. The O and I zoning district was selected because it is established as a district in which the principal use of land is for residences, services, offices, and institutional types such as hospitals, medical offices, clinics, and schools. This is an area of the existing property. Currently, the property houses a church and administrative offices. The surrounding zoning districts are I two to the north, SC Shopping Center, and B one to the south, IB Industrial Business to the east, and IB Industrial Business to the west. Adjacent land uses is back part of the dog park to the north, wooded lots to the south, the tension pond to the east, and wooded lots to the west. The property is located within the mixed-use rural residential and flood hazard and wetland overlay land use sectors. The proposed rezoning is in compliance with the city's comprehensive land use, which recommends land uses that can be located between commercial slash industrial and residential land uses. The comprehensive plan also recommends that the land uses and zoning districts that can serve as a buffer from the roadway along transportation corridors such as Highway seventy. This is a picture of the property. The planning board recommended approval of the request, and that stated it was consistent with the comprehensive land use at the regular scheduled meeting on April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Included in your meeting package was a list of all of the permitted and special uses for O and I, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions as it relates to the rezoning requests for the property from IB Industrial and B General Business to O and I Office and Institutional? Any questions? Any questions? Madam Director, you requesting a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right, having said that, we're now in the public hearing. Will there be any to speak in favor of or opposition of? Will there be any to speak in favor of or opposition of? Will there be any to speak in favor of or opposition of? Hear none, see none. Public hearing is now closed back to the council. Anything from the council as it relates to the rezoning? Hear none, see none. Madam Director, would you like to entertain any further?
No, sir.
Having said that, as you stated, was submitted by the planning board and is in compliance with the city's comprehensive land use. Is there a motion to move forward? Some move by Councilwoman Solomon. Is there a second?
Second.
Some move to properly second by Councilwoman C four. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hear none, see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, next. Under action agenda, consider approval for Smart Kinston Foundation to install artistic wraps and crosswalk installation in downtown Kinston. Will be Randy Rogers, the director, Smart Kinston Foundation.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor, council. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. I am Randy Rogers, and I'm the executive of Smart Kinston. Smart Kinston Foundation has a grant to wrap four signal control boxes and to design and paint one crosswalk, all designed by smartists who live in Kinston. The goal of the project is to create designs that represent the city of Kinston's identity, which is a warm and inviting environment that celebrates and embraces a diverse and culturally rich population, while also enhancing Kinston's public spaces by adding vibrant works of art to utilitarian spaces that are in high visibility areas. These pieces of public art can enhance the visual character of our city, promote community dialogue, turn ordinary spaces into community landmarks, and are accessible to everyone. The light boxes we would like to wrap are K oh one located at the corner of Heritage and Gordon, K two located at the corner of Heritage and North, K three located at the corner of Heritage and Blunt, and K four located at the corner of Heritage and Peyton. Smart Kinston is also proposing a crosswalk from the Dragon Park across Mitchell Street to the Shirley Herring Memorial Garden located at the corner of Mitchell and North Street. And Stephen just had a footnote that he particularly liked the picture of the hands, which you'll see in a minute. So what I'd like to do is show you some examples of the designs that we have. The first one is basically a floral, and as all of these are going to wrap the light boxes, and there's going to be a social district logo as well as which light box it is. These are not exactly what we're going to be doing, but gives you an idea of what we're going to be doing. Okay, you can go to the next one. And this is another idea with a music theme, and the next one. As I say, these are not the exact images because we could not pay the artist to do them just on speculation. And another scene, here's, this is one in particular that Stephen liked, was the Morning Glories. Okay. And then the next one, of course, is more agricultural. So you can do anything with these light boxes, and of course, the tulips. And then this kind of represents the friendship aspect of it. We were trying to get the friendship aspect, music, art, and community in general. Okay, the next one. This was a crosswalk design that we were given by one of the artists. And the next, this is the crosswalk that Stephen really liked, where we would actually have children make the handprints and make the designs like a rainbow from one side of the street to the other. Okay, and then here's some sketches which are more about community, so it could be something like a couple dining, and then signs of the foods that we have around, and then on the other side would be just a picture of the foods. And this is light box here, so it'd be all wrapped. Each image would be on each side. And this is just an example of the music light box. However, we do have some, an artist in particular who does a lot of jazz images, and so what we're wanting is for him to do an image of the instruments and the jazz players on each side of the light box. Okay. And then this is more of the community, like using it as a, on each side of the light box, of course, using it to show our hospitality here. Of course, Mother Earth is right there, and if we have one more of those... And then this is just friends and community as well. Each of these would be on each side of the light box. So these are, these are an example of the images. The sketches are closer to what some of the images would be. And so we just wanted to present these to y'all for approval, to move forward and let our artists decorate our town.
All right. Thank you, Randy. Any discussion from the council as it relates to the the arts being displayed in these particular areas throughout the city? Any input from the council as it relates to the art?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I thought, I think a lot of those look very nice, but far as the crosswalk, I think in a previous meeting, maybe I'm mistaken, but we had already got some kind of diagram or something from downtown council to do something about a sidewalk across there. I'm wondering, is that the same thing, or is there something different? Or maybe somebody can enlighten me on that.
Pro Tim, I think you may be thinking about when we had them to actually put the four-way stop. Is that, is that what you're thinking about, when we did a four-way stop? When we discussed the four-way stop there?
When we was talking about the Shirley Herring design, there was some talk about putting a crosswalk there earlier. Is this the same project? Is this something different?
I think it's something different.
This is something different. It might be something that Leon was going to do with the revitalization. So I guess it would just be a matter of whether this would be something that would be suitable for that as well, because we could put the crosswalk anywhere.
Well...
And as I, excuse me, let me add, we have this grant, and we, if we don't have it finished by the end of June, we lose, we lose the funding. So I just wanted to let you know.
Leon, if you would like to interject as it relates to that, would you, you know, respond to what that looked like, that crosswalk, or your...
You'll need your microphone.
Thank you, Sherri.
Yeah, our proposal had included a crosswalk there at that location to connect the corner at Shirley Herring Memorial Garden to the playground there across the street, as well as a mural in the middle of the street, but perhaps we can partner up on that.
Well, I'd make a suggestion that y'all work together on that, and if the rest of the council agree, then...
All right. Thank you, Pro Tim. I do appreciate that. Look forward to seeing what that collaboration will look like.
Thank you, sir.
Any further conversation from the council?
Yes.
Ms. C four.
Love it.
Make it pretty.
Yeah. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman C four.
I appreciate your hard work, and I think the artwork is very, very beautiful. I just have one question about climate change that we have. What effect would it have on the artwork?
None at all. These are acrylic wrapped boxes, so, and they'll be impervious to anything. Unless somebody attacks it individually, we'll be good.
Great.
For the boxes in particular, do we need to establish any type of agreement for like how long the murals will stay? Because we don't want them to eventually to deteriorate and get impacted by the weather, and they start looking worn down. So is there a timeframe you all are expecting for them to be removed by?
Oh, no, no. The other wrapped light boxes that we've seen have been around indefinitely. So unless they are vandalized or whatever, which I'm sure they would not be, they would be fine. They would last quite some time.
Steve, do remind me, I believe, we've been working on this project for some time. I know you've been after the grant for some time. Did they already sign the agreement that we had set earlier?
Yeah, the agreement has been executed, and it does require them to maintain the wraps. So if anything should happen, it would be up to them to take care of it.
All right, I think we're clear.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Randy.
Yeah.
All right, having said that, entertaining motion to approve?
Motion.
Some move is a second?
Seconds.
Some move by Mayor Pro Tim Hardy, and seconded by, it was a tie.
That's a man.
Seconded by Councilwoman C four. Under discussion. Under discussion. All right, hear none, see none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item number two, consider approval of review for special use permit for sixteen ten North Queen Street. I believe this is about the, this has been pulled off the table. This is the third time, I believe, we're here as it relates to item number two. Ms. Blunt, if you would...
Thank you, mayor, and you are correct. This is the third time this request has come before council. It was continued from the April fifteenth meeting so that more members of the board could be present to be able to make this decision. Just a real quick recap. Sixteen ten North Queen Street received a special use permit back in twenty twenty-three, had some conditions on it. One was to have licensed armed security and to end all activities at midnight. It also had in that it was going to have a review within a year. The year has passed. The property owner wants council to revisit it, to consider removing all of the conditions so that she can go ahead and continue to rent out her establishment. The applicant is here tonight, so if there's any further questions that you may have, you can ask her while she's here. And just to remind everyone, the public hearing was officially closed at the last meeting. So we're at this stage at this point.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Blunt. Any questions from the council as it relates to this item?
Ms. Jackson, just want to tell you, thank you for coming. I just, I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. Are the individuals that rent your space, and I'm thinking probably particularly more for some of your customers that may rent it like at night, or are they required to have security?
Yes, they are required to have security, and I had addressed that at the last one, that the evening events or anything during the night are required to have security at those events. There are two back doors. There is to be a security at each door. There has to be two security that walk, and there has to be two security at the front door as well. So that is a major requirement. We also require for them to have insurance if anything is to transpire at their events, and so far, we've had no incidents. But yeah, we do put a lot of stipulations into place that they have to provide.
All right. Any further discussion from the council for Ms. Jackson? Ms. Jackson, thank you for coming again, and I do appreciate you and your efforts and the many businesses that you do have. And I'm excited to hear that you said you actually have insurance on top of everything else.
Oh, yeah.
And security, so that's exciting to hear. I just thank you for what you're doing. Anything from the council as it relates to this property? All right. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Having said that, under entertaining motion.
Motion.
Some move is a second.
Second.
Some move to properly second.
If I could, just to clarify, is the motion to remove the restrictions from the existing permit, is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, let the record reflect. There was some move by Mayor Pro Tim Hardy, seconded by Councilwoman, correction, Councilmember Suggs. Under discussion.
Mayor Hardy, I just want to share with the council, since there were no concerns mentioned in this meeting, in the future, when folks come to us with these type of business permits, I would love if we have no stated concerns, no one stated any concerns at the previous meeting, that we, you know, go ahead and take... that we, you know, go ahead and take action right then, there was no reason for this to get delayed. Um, unfortunately, I was sick and missed the last meeting when this came up, but if none of the council members expressed any concerns after us knowing about this since July of twenty twenty-three, uh, it included in our email and the agenda packet, there was no reason that this had to get delayed like this, I just, I do think when it comes to businesses trying to do something positive in Kinston, trying to bring revenue, provide safe spaces for people to entertain and enjoy themselves, we shouldn't be the hindrance of why things don't get taken place, why things aren't, um, able to move forward, so that's just my only discussion on the particular motion and, and this action item. I just don't want us to have these type of delays in the future.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to state, the only reason I, I tabled it because I didn't think there was a, all the council members here at the last meeting. So uh, just to let Ms. Jackson know, there was no hindrance for me personally to try to hold up your progress.
Yeah, and again, um, we, we do thank you, um, for how you have contributed, um, to our community. And, you know, of course, you know, there's, there's a, some discussion that, that, that will happen because of what happened in the past, you know, history on that piece of property. And so therefore, when the decision came back up, you know, just being, having you here, just, you know, um, like I said, there hasn't been any incidents, but us just being able to hear that you take the safety, you know, of those who patronize your business, um, as the number one priority. And so it was just good to hear, you know, what you're expecting, what you're requiring of those who rent your space. Thank you.
Thank you all council members for those comments, appreciate that. Um, and thank you, Ms. Jackson, for returning again. All right, having said that, we'll move on to, uh, item number four. Correction. Correction. We were under discussion. Entertaining correction, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries.
Thank you guys so very much.
All right. So moving on to item number four, correction, item number three. Consider approval of a public hearing for June third abandonment of undeveloped right-of-way for North Davis Street between Tower Hill Road and Blunt Street, uh, Director Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, I have been approached by a citizen, Mr. Michael Sousa, who owns property at five ten Tower Hill Road regarding a vacant right-of-way that's next to his property. Uh, runs along the west side of the property and it's actually designated as a portion of North Davis Street. It extends from Tower Hill Road to Blunt Street. Davis Street is paved from Blunt Street going north and it's paved from King Street going south, but the blocks between King and Blunt are just undeveloped properties, um, there's no road, no unpaved road, nothing there, uh, to encourage traffic. Uh, so what Mr. Sousa has found is that in the area next to his house, he sees a lot of people going through that area, walking, driving, even though it's not a paved street, uh, driving four-wheelers, whatever, uh, throughout area. His concerns are, are safety, uh, for people going through there all times, the day and night, but also for having the area that gets rutted, uh, where it can't be mowed or maintained very well, gets really muddy and, and doesn't look good and a lot of trash. Uh, so himself and the church next to him, um, the Apostolic Deliverance Church of Christ, they both have kind of worked together to try to keep the area clean between their two properties. Um, but at this point, they would like to proceed with abandoning that portion of the right-of-way, let the property revert to those two property owners on each side, uh, and then they will, Mr. Sousa in particular, the fences, uh, the church has also identified they would be interested in fencing off the area so people can't get through there anymore, then they would maintain the areas and take care of it. So that, that's his intent, that's what they are interested in doing, uh, I've got a couple slides here if you're not familiar with the area. There are actually four properties in the block between Blunt Street and Tower Hill Road that border the right-of-way. Uh, initially, when he reached out to me, I wrote to all four property owners. Uh, the two that are on Blunt Street, one did not want to have the alleyway abandoned, uh, they didn't want the extra land, and then the other one never responded. So I didn't hear from, get, get anything favorable on that end. So what I told Mr. Sousa is I would present abandoning the part between himself and the church, since both of them are interested in taking over that property and see if council would be interested in moving forward with that. This kind of shows you the aerial view, you can kind of see, like I said, it, it's not a road, it's not dirt, it's nothing, it's just grass and trees. Uh, so it's not really set up for anybody to be going through that right now, although people are doing that. Uh, these are pictures of how it looks like from the street. This is the portion between Mr. Sousa's house in the white and the church in the yellow on the left side. Um, you can see it's just grass, natural area. And then this is the look from Blunt Street, it's even heavier vegetation on that side, so it's not really amenable for any type of traffic. I, I don't see the city ever having a need to pave that area. Um, because at the south end of that, there are actually three streets that come together, Tower Hill, North Street and Chestnut Street all come together right there by Mr. Sousa's house. So it's not really anything that we could develop further south without a lot of work, uh, abandoning other streets. So if there was a need for it in the future, I could see holding on to it, but I'm not sure I see a real need for the city to have that moving forward. Um, officially, this doesn't require any type of public hearing, uh, it is not a developed street, it's just a right-of-way. So if the city wishes to abandon the right-of-way, it would revert to the property owners. I'm suggesting we have a public hearing just so that we can notify people in the area and the public in case anybody does have concerns about it. And I'm suggesting we hold that hearing on June third at the council meeting. So all we're asking for tonight is, is to schedule that public hearing and we'll bring the information back, notify all those adjacent owners and we'll publish in social media and our websites about the meeting too, if anybody wants to come. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Steve, I think you answered all my questions, um, uh, even the safety precautionary measures as it relates to that particular parcel or land area between the house and the church and, um, what is your, uh, what is your recommendation as it relates to that land, uh, even further as far as possibilities in the future? None at all? I just wanted to kind of get your personal, uh, take on that.
Yeah, so the, the areas north of there are fully developed, Davis Street stops when it gets up to, uh, I believe it's Washington, it doesn't go any further than that, uh, it can't, there's property beyond that, so it's always going to be just a little residential area. Uh, so I don't really see a need for that. If we go back to this map, you can see Blunt Street goes out to Martin Luther King and it obviously goes all the way to Queen Street the other direction on the north side. Uh, Tower Hill and North Street do the same thing on the south side, so there's not really a need to go through that one block.
All right, so you're, uh, just asking for a motion to approve the actual hearing on June third? June second?
June second.
June third? All right. All right. Having said, having said that, consider approval of a public hearing for June third abandonment of undeveloped right-of-way for North Davis Street between Tower Hill Road and Blunt Street, and this will be considered approval for the public hearing for June third, um, is there a motion?
Motion.
So moved or second?
Second.
So moved by Councilwoman Solomon, seconded by Councilwoman Seefor, under discussion, under discussion. Under discussion, hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries, thank you, Steve. Item number four, consider approval of contract amendment with Weathers and Ravenel for construction obstruction services on the Lawrence Heights Water and Sewer Replacement Project. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, as y'all are well aware, the Lawrence Heights Project's been ongoing for quite a while. Uh, activity that actually had been sort of suspended, um, we've had some interactions with the contractor, with their surety, that we'll talk about more later tonight in closed session. Uh, but the short version is that work is resuming out there. Uh, they actually began work again on April twenty-second. Um, in what we have negotiated with them is a set amount of time for them to finish what's left. Uh, it's ninety days to finish all of the testing work and things they have to do for the pipe and get the roads paved. Uh, that's to achieve substantial completion and then thirty days beyond that to do a checklist and make sure we get everything cleaned up. Um, that time, obviously, we're well beyond our initial contract time. We have a third-party construction observation firm that does the inspections for us. Uh, so to, to cover this extra hundred and twenty days total, uh, we'd need to have them back on site and be able to pay for their services. So we're requesting a change order tonight for the construction observation contract. Uh, they've estimated that hundred and twenty days will take about two hundred and sixty hours of service, cost of forty-four thousand dollars. So we're requesting a change order to their contract for that amount. It will come from funds within the project, there's no additional appropriations needed, uh, it will be added to our SRF loan that we'll have for the project. So if there is anything else we need to get as far as a budget amendment.
All right, so, uh, to be clear, so then by September, is that what we're looking at, uh, timeframe?
Yes, sir.
All right, September timeframe and it'll be, uh, resurfaced and put back together again in that particular area?
Yeah, it, it's been a lot of work, we really appreciate, appreciate the patience of the people out there, I know this has been trying. Uh, but we, we want to make sure in the end it is a good product and not something that's going to fall back apart on them.
And thank you much, Steve, uh, I know we've had many questions as it relates to that, so between now and September, we should, uh, be squared away as it relates to the Lawrence Heights Project, that area. All right, so, uh, having said that, entertaining motion?
Motion.
So moved by Councilwoman Solomon, is there a second? So moved probably second by a councilman Suggs. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion, hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Item number five, consider approval of Down East Bird Dogs, Down East Bird Dogs Fireworks, Chief Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, the Down East Bird Dogs have submitted a fireworks discharge permit for the following home games, Friday, May ninth, Friday, June sixth, Friday, August eighth, and Friday, August twenty-second. They're using the same vendor that we've used in the past, all that information's in your packet. They meet all the requirements, the certificate of insurance is in the city of Kinston's name, and my recommendation is to approve the permit.
All right, thank you, Chief. Mr. Attorney, would you like to entertain? All right, thank you for that. Anything from the council? Hearing none, seeing none, entertaining motion?
Motion.
So moved or second?
Second.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tem Hardy, seconded by, I guess we'll yield to the gentlewoman, Councilwoman Solomon. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. All right, Chief. Item number six, consider approval of July fourth fireworks. Go ahead.
All right, uh, this permit request was for the, uh, combination, city of Kinston and Down East Bird Dogs uh, for July fourth. And again, it'll be the same vendor, same location. Uh, so all the public needs to know is there will be a July fourth fireworks show, there'll be plenty of areas to park to be able to see it, there's based on the terrain of where the fireworks are going to be going off, so everyone should be able to benefit from it. And the certificate of insurance is in the city's name, so I recommend approval of this permit as well.
Thank you, Chief, your recommendation. Mr. Attorney, would you like to entertain? All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney, having said that, entertaining motion to approve?
Motion.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tem Hardy, is there a second? Is there a second? So moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Solomon, under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion, hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries, thank you, Chief. Item number seven, consider approval of special event permit request for Lincoln City Valley Reunion, Chief, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, this is going to be the same as in the past, um, it's going to be on Sunday, May twenty-fifth from nine AM to five PM. They're going to hire four police officers to help, uh, work that area for security. It's going to take place at Holloway Park as it has every year. Uh, there will be some tents, but they will not be over four hundred square foot. Uh, they're going to have restrooms at the park set up, food and drink will be sold and given away there. Uh, they will not have alcohol there. The whole, whole homeless agreement has been signed and the insurance is in the city of Kinston's name.
Thank you, Chief, and that's your recommendation. Uh, Mr. Attorney, would you like to entertain? All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. I'd like to entertain a motion?
Motion.
I yield to the gentlewoman, Councilwoman Solomon, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hardy, under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion, hearing none, seeing none, and all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Item number eight, Chief, consider approval of special event request, Suda Shrine of Spring Ceremony Parade, uh, Chief.
All right, so they were supposed to do this back in two thousand twenty, but something very important happened, COVID, so they had to cancel it.
I remember.
Uh, so they want to come back and do it. It's going to be on Saturday, May seventeenth from eleven AM to one PM. It's going to pretty much mirror the Christmas, uh, parade that we have here in Kinston, they're going to set up at Grander Stadium and then end up at Grander Stadium. Um, they have hired around ten police officers to help out with security in, in intersections along Queen Street. Um, we also have some extra officers there on hand to include myself. Uh, there'll be no alcohol there, um, the whole homeless agreement has been signed and the city of Kinston is listed as the insurance certificate holder.
Thank you, Chief, uh, very important for us to be there for sure on the traffic, uh, traffic, traffic control as it relates to those intersections, so, um, I'm excited to hear that. And it's good to see them come back again, uh, this year, they know to put on a great show, the Shriners here in, in Kinston, Illinois County, so uh, absolutely great, uh, organization there too. Um, having said that, anything from the council that relates to this, uh, permit? All right, hearing none, seeing none, entertaining motion?
Motion.
So moved by Councilwoman Solomon, is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Seefor. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion, hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Item number nine, consider a resolution in support of a grant application to NCDOT Integrated Multi-Model Planning Program. Uh, this is Tyra Heinz.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Last one on the schedule. Okay, so, um, I'm here just to give you a clear overview of what this grant can support, um, how it fits into the city goals or how we need to tweak it, um, and then make a decision on whether to move forward or not. Um, so in your package, there is a completed application, mine is a resolution. Um, but after that, I believe there's a summary, I'm not sure which order it's in. Uh, but I'll just start reading from the summary and we'll go from there. All right, so the city of Kinston is pursuing a, uh, funding through the NCDOT Integrated Mobility Division Multi-Model Planning Program to update its bicycle and pedestrian plan. The last plan was updated in two thousand and twelve and while the update began in twenty twenty, of course, COVID happened, so also there was staff, uh, staff changes, so that got halted. But with the ongoing efforts to improve safety, revitalize downtown and strengthen connections across the city, now's the time to move forward with this plan if you all choose. So why it matters, a new plan will improve safety and accessibility by identifying high-needs areas for sidewalks, bike lanes, and crossings. Uh, it'll connect key destinations like neighborhoods, schools, parks, businesses, and downtown. It'll help guide future projects and help us secure funding for infrastructure improvements. And last but not least, it'll support economic development by making Kinston a more walkable, vibrant city. Um, right now, many areas lack sidewalks, uh, major intersections are difficult to cross and we have no dedicated bicycle network. This plan will help us develop a clear roadmap to fix these issues and make Kinston more walkable and biker-friendly. Um, so where we're starting from, the city has not started from scratch, uh, we have a good foundation, so we have two thousand and twelve comp pedestrian plan, uh, which is thirteen years old, um, and then we have the Kinston Waterfront, uh, Waterfront Now Vision Plan, which came out in the early two thousands. Um, downtown themed development plan, which is also a early nineties, uh, nineteen nineties plan. And then we have our green infrastructure plans for the Neuse River, which is also, uh, older. But new developments include the Safer Streets Grant that, uh, Public Services received and the Lenore County, uh, Lenore County received a multi, multimodal planning grant to help complete a riverwalk along the Neuse River. So this shows, uh, local advancements and regional commitment to a better connected transportation system. Now, funding, uh, total project costs, so overall, this grant, uh, the, the total connection of the plan, the engagement and the, uh, publishing will total sixty-five thousand dollars, but the grant is at eighty-two and the, uh, publishing will total sixty-five thousand dollars, but the grant is an eighty-twenty split with a twenty percent match. So that means NCDOT will cover fifty-two thousand and the city will only have to match thirteen thousand and that's on a reimbursement basis. Um, this funding will help us secure a pla- a professional planning support, gather community input, and create actionable plan to guide investments in our pedestrian, um, life. So, yeah, so what we need from council, um, also in your package is a drafted resolution um, that I just put together to help, uh, complete the application and of course, approval of the thirteen thousand local ma- thirteen thousand dollar local match. And that will demonstrate the city's commitment to improving bicycle and pedestrian plans, um, strengthening our grant application and then setting the foundation for a more connected Kinston. Um, and I would end this by saying, um, while this grant cannot deliver a full transportation plan, it presents a extremely valuable and necessary starting point. A strong, um, updated bicycle and pedestrian plan can directly support safe accessible connections to transit, compliance with ADA and equity goals, prioritization of sidewalk, trail, and crosswalk investments, and of course, help us secure future opportunities for a full-scale transportation plan. And, there you go.
Thank you, uh, it's high outstanding job, by the way. Uh, this just coincides with what we already have going on as it relates to the safer streets for all, as I hear you mention that, uh, which is a big deal for our city. Um, and as it relates to, uh, AARP, Asian Emplice, um, you know, that's a big deal also. We tie into that type of, uh, opportunity. Um, us being the, I believe, the number, uh, tenth state in the US for age-friendly communities as it relates to biking, accessibility, Asian Emplice is a big deal. Uh, thank you so very much, uh, Director, uh, Blunt and Tyra for jumping directly on that and picking me up for over twelve or however many years ago, thirteen years ago, uh, as it relates to the, uh, accessibility and biking and, uh, sharing the roadway type of opportunities, safer streets, high, you know, uh, you know, definition-type roadway or intersections, however, um, it's something that we need to continually focus on. So thank you so very much. Um, and I think this is a great opportunity and it just makes sense for us to, uh, proceed with that. Thank you so very kindly. Anything from the council as it relates to, uh, this, uh, supported NCDOT Integrated Multi-Model Planning Program? Anything from the council?
Um, I would also like to add that, um, just to kind of gauge how many, um, walkers we have in our city, um, over twenty percent of households do not have reliable access to a car. So many people are on foot, on bikes, um, traveling to and from where they need to be.
Absolutely. Um, anything from the council as it relates to this? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, seeing none, like to entertain a motion?
Motion.
So moved by Councilwoman Solomon, is there a second?
Second.
So moved and probably seconded by Councilwoman C four, under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Tyra. Outstanding job, by the way.
Thank you.
All right. Madam manager?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Attorney? All right, anything from the council?
Mr. Mayor, just, uh, want to thank everybody that had, uh, input in the, uh, barbecue festival this weekend. Um, great turnout. Um, I want to thank everybody that had a part in it and, uh, go Kinston.
All right, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, as it relates to the, uh, you know, World Book of Guinness Records, uh, deal, that was a big deal for us. My understanding in the first thirty minutes, the first thirty minutes of the sale of those barbecue sandwiches, which was a lot of the eight-hour time slot, uh, I think there were fifteen hundred sold. In three hours, they were sold out. Three hours, four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five barbecue sandwiches in less than eight hours, to be more precise. So that's a big deal for us and the spotlight is on us, and we do appreciate all those that played a major part in making it happen. Um, big deal, and I talked to Waylon Adams, the chair of the barbecue festival, uh, today, probably about two hours ago or so. Um, excited about where we are, where we're going, and what it'll look like in the future as it relates to events, however. Um, congratulations to all those that, uh, were recognized for a key to the city. It was recognized and, uh, we do appreciate their efforts and their work. And we look forward to seeing, uh, the work continue, uh, moving forward as it relates to, uh, destination Kinston and giving folks opportunities, uh, uh, in our community. So, um, having said that, thank you to the entire team over here, uh, at Kinston, the city of Kinston. I do appreciate you guys every single day, uh, for what you're doing and how you're fighting so hard to, uh, to, to access grant funding and, and to just, to stretch yourselves and, and then to see what we can come up with, uh, also. Uh, but I, I look forward to continually fighting with you and, uh, advocating for what we need most. So having said that, I'd like to entertain a motion to go to closed session.
Motion.
So moved by council member, Suggs. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I guess we don't want to go. All right, so moved by council member Suggs and seconded by council, Councilwoman C four. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? And of course, North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, take three eighteen point three, eleven A three. We are now in closed session. All right, call, calling this meeting back to order from closed session. Today's date, five, six, twenty twenty-five, we're back in, uh, regular session. Having said that, we will make an amendment to the motion, uh, that we moved prior to, which was, um, to go to closed session in accordance to North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three, take three eighteen point eleven, A three and A six, A three and A six. That amendment, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the, uh, amendment to the motion, the original motion. Is there a motion?
Motion.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Hardy and seconded by Councilwoman Solomon, under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
So moved by Councilwoman Solomon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Hardy, under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. We are now adjourned and good night.